Okay, we have rules for chapters 6, 17, 36 with open enrollment.
So shifting gears, I just want to acknowledge the fine work that the attorneys for that prior case did. I think that I benefited from their advocacy and I think you benefited by their oral presentation. We're trying to think about how the department can be more helpful in the administrative law judge a contested case process such as by sending you the record, the complete record in advance and will continue to try to make the process better for you as well as the litigants. Table setting for this entire batch of rules, two of the three rulemaking packages include an emergency rulemaking. This is including the one currently before you. The emergency rule, if you adopt it, will become effective as the day after it will become effective tomorrow, as soon as I hit submit in the rules management system. Parallel to that, for both emergency rules, there will be standard notice and comment rulemaking. So the emergency rules are an interim step. There will be standard notice and comment rulemaking. These rules will come back before you, not in an emergency form, but as a final form after the conclusion of notice and comment rulemaking. When you adopt any amendments to the final rule, it will replace the emergency rule that you, if you adopt emergency rules today, kind of like World Wrestling Federation where the adopted and filed rule tags in and replaces the emergency rule. The emergency rule is a placeholder. It's immediately effective, but it's only temporarily effective until the final rulemaking occurs. So this is the first time in a while that the state board has considered emergency rules. Just wanted to give you a refresher about the process, that it is a both hand. Emergency rules effective August 5th accompanied by standard notice and comment rulemaking. So the emergency rules, it's not the final word. The public will have some opportunity to weigh in on the content of the emergency rules. The first before you today, and I have Eric Hites and others, would be an amendment to open enrollment rules and some related amendments to athletic eligibility and chapter six, which is your chapter on contested cases. This rulemaking implements a statute which directs the department to do emergency rules. Thirty thousand foot view, it strikes the deadline. It strikes the March 1st deadline. It strikes the September 1st deadline for kindergarten. There is no more open enrollment deadline. On March 2nd, I want to open enroll. The only limits would be if the, the only practical limits. There's some theoretical limits for non-existent desegregation orders. No school is under, in Iowa is under the segregation order. But their practical limit would be receiving district has insufficient classroom space or the receiving district has no appropriate special education program. Other than those two conditions, a parent can open enroll now at any time. And if they weren't, the second thing is it strips the jurisdiction of this board to hear appeals because there's nothing to appeal anymore. All of your appeals were concerning missing the March 1st deadline. There's no need to appeal a deadline, missing a deadline or showing good cause to miss a deadline that no longer exists. The rules made some conforming changes regarding athletic eligibility. These rules, this legislation does not change athletic eligibility at all. It just moves the prior language from a code section that was stricken into a new code section. So athletic eligibility stays the same. No more open enrollment deadline either March 1st or September 1st for entering kindergarteners. And since there's no deadline, no jurisdiction to hear appeals. There will be no more bullying harassment appeal, no more serious health condition appeals because there's no deadline to be excused from. Eric Hites and others who actually know what they're doing are here to answer some questions. But that's my summary. The emergency rule and the notice of intended action adopted and filed state the same thing. They reflect the statute. So Eric and I are now open for any questions that you may have.
A question that crossed my mind in dealing with some of these things. You're talking about there's insufficient classroom space or if there's not a special ed program appropriate. That's, that's good. What if a student is under suspension and/or possible expulsion proceedings?
That still doesn't change. That still require action by both boards. So that, that deadline was not, that deadline is independent of, like insufficient classroom space and like special education eligibility, that, that is independent of the March 1st deadline.
Okay, so.
So if little Tommy gets put out of Davenport North High School, which didn't know why it didn't happen, I couldn't, I couldn't immediately walk into the back door for North Scott. The boards would have to agree and that, that's the status. That status quo language is maintained. It wasn't stricken by the code.
And the only appeal process for denial is to court?
If there's, if the question is special education, there's the special education appeals pathway before an administrative law judge. If it's insufficient classroom space, it's some appeal to state district court where the, where the family lives or the school's located.
Are those the only two?
Those are the, those are the big ones, the, the practical ones. Insufficient classroom space, inappropriate special education program and for, for my people, you're under suspension or expulsion.
Did little Tommy move to a district and move back?
Yes.
I like the school anymore. I think I want to move back.
Yeah, they always could. If I want to return to my district of residence, if I want to move to an alternative receiving district, I'm still under open enroll. I moved from district A to B to C. No more deadline for that. I can do it. But my athletic eligibility, my, my red shirt period would restart with each move.
Oh, okay.
That does not change.
There's really no restrictions as far as a number of times a student could open enroll during the course of the school year. Theoretically, you can change every week theoretically, but practically it's not going to happen. But there's no restrictions as far as.
This is, the legislative intent was to maximize parent choice.
So is space really space? Or what if, what if there's just too many, what if there's enough space, but it's too big of a class size?
Well, that's something that the classroom space is locally determined. So if district A says our kindergarten classroom is 20, district B says our kindergarten, kindergarten classroom is 25, and a child moving from district B would tilt the balance from 25 to 26, district B can say no, subject to the parent appealing to district court.
Okay.
What if you're, what if you're currently a student at Ankeny High School and your parents move to then you're in the Centennial?
So Ankeny versus Centennial, an intra-district transfer, that's locally determined. So DAV North, DAV Central, intra-district voluntary student transfers, that's a local decision for districts with more than one comprehensive school at a grade band. This applies to Ankeny versus Bonnaroo.
Okay, thanks. This is legislatively decided, right, these deadlines?
Right.
What choice do we have then?
We've been voluntold.
Yeah, so I mean.
Again, it goes back to the question of jurisdiction, the question of our rulemaking authority. We have none anymore to have, to have rules that set a deadline.
Just cleanup.
It's cleanup, but the reason going through the emergency rulemaking process is so that it, so students who want to move out tomorrow, the rules aren't perceived as a barrier. The statute controls, it's, it's cleanup. That's the.
That's a great way of, that's a great frame on it.
And the transportation issue doesn't change?
Transportation, transportation subsidy eligibility for that, the ability for school districts to cross boundaries, that, that's all status quo.
Okay. Call for a question?
I'll make a motion that we approve the rules for chapters 6, 17, and 36, open enrollment.
For seconds.
Second?
May, point of order, may, may have that reflected. It is both the emergency filing and the notice of intended action.
Yes.
So I have a question on that. Why are you filing an emergency?
For cleanup, so, so that there's just absolutely no question for a school administrator, a school board member. There's absolutely no question that there's no more deadline.
And didn't the statute direct that we had that authority?
Yes.
They want us to, to make sure that districts have no question, parents have no question that they can do this.
Okay, because I know the Rules Committee does not love emergency.
Yes, and the Rules, the Rules Review Committee staff know that these two emergency rules of their past are coming and they know the authority for them.
Any other discussion? All in favor of getting sent on?
Aye.
Opposed? You carry. Right. Next. Charter schools. I'm sorry, excuse me.
No, it's.
Thank you.
So this is a charter school funding cleanup. We have been also directed to file emergency rules. Under the charter school bill as initially enacted, there would have been for the school board, for the founding group state board model, a lag until at least February to get payments. So the first billing would have been in February, the first payment would have been in March. The legislators, when they were working on the charter school package, were so focused on sort of academic flexibility and rules flexibility and innovation that using the open enrollment and the tuition billing model just seemed like it made sense until it didn't. So this would be a process where charter schools, both of the school board, state board, as well as the founding group model, get as close to real time money based on actual student count. So if, which would be reconciled at multiple checkpoints throughout the year. The October, August initial enrollment, October 1st count date, there's a checkpoint in the winter and then a checkpoint in the spring. Monthly payments throughout the time would be reconciled. Public school districts receive funding not that real time. The funding would come directly from the department. The department would withhold that funding from the resident district's allocation of the prior year for the, for the subsequent year. The intent would be to get charter schools of both models, the founding group state board and the school board state board model, funding in, in close to real time. Dr. Knight presented a critique of this emergency rulemaking. She has provided me a red line version in case the board directs the department to go in a different direction. But there, there are risks associated with, with, with either direction that the board takes. With this, I have my multiple colleagues here, Cassian Klein, Janet Boyd, Eric Hites, who are able to answer sort of on the ground questions about how these rules would operate. And Dr. Knight has remained in the room to answer any questions that the board may have of her. So with that, any questions regarding both the emergency rulemaking and the notice of intended action to address charter school funding?
Eric, could you speak to her objections? The objections are her concerns about how this thing, funding goes.
I'm going to defer to Cassandra on that because Cassandra is the bureau chief for school finance and really has a great handle on that.
The questions Dr. Knight has presented or the suggestion she's presented would actually give her forward. So she would, so in comparison to what Thomas had shared, school districts lag a year behind. So the students for one year actually generate the funding for the next year. And so charter schools though would be given reconciliation points throughout the year, but really funded as they're serving the student, which is really in advance of districts already. So what she's asking for is to base not the funding amount on the students that she's serving, but the students that she's anticipating that she will serve. So from a forward funding standpoint, there's not really, there's not really anything to compare that to as far as, you know, the way that districts are funded or anything like that. So I think there's just some, some concern about how different we want that to be versus the way the rest of the public schools are actually funded.
So we don't have the right to change that. School board can't change that, Eric. I mean, as a board here, we can't change that.
So the way that the rules are written right now is consistent with the statute that was enacted this spring. So the legislation that was enacted last year in the 21 session did provide for that nine month. And I'll, and I'll say this also. So if districts were to have one of their students served by another district, then those districts are all within that same billing standpoint where they're billing for first semester in February and second semester in July. And so that was the initial model that the charter schools were approved under as far as the funding goes, because that's how they receive their funding. Dr. Knight, I think, had shared in multiple venues that that may create a barrier to creating, to establishing her school. And so in response to that, the legislation did, the legislature did act to allow more on time funding.
Thank you. So maybe 19.12.7 talks about this estimated process and reconciling. Is that different than what Dr. Knight was talking about in terms of being paid on, okay, assume I have 300 students and then reconcile that at the end of the year?
Right. So what she's asking for is she is anticipating she's going to serve throughout the year 275 students. And so she wants funding to begin in September for those 275 students. So the process that the department has laid out, that's reflected in the legislation as well as the rules before you, would actually allow for one initial reporting of the students that are enrolled, that are planning to attend the charter school, and then three additional reconciliation points. So each of those would allow for those monthly payments then to be affected based on the numbers, the number of students that she's serving. One of the, I guess, compounding challenges with the funding, the way that it's being presented is she wants, she's requesting 275 students for an entire year. So one of the things that she's recognized is that because of the special population of students that she's serving, they may only be missing a few credits and they may not attend all year. Well, in this case, the, the districts are actually still generating 1.0 funding for the students and anyone else serving the district students, whether it's another district or a charter school, is only, is only entitled to that daily tuition rate. So while she may serve 275 students throughout the entire year, it's still going to be the actual amount that is paid would be just based on the days that those students are served. So if students come in for the beginning of the semester, for the first semester, then we would catch that. Tomorrow's the deadline to report the initial students that are enrolled and then again on October 1st. So we would see those dates of enrollment there. Then again, in January, there is a checkpoint. So if she had any new students that are attending for semester two, those would be captured. And any graduated students that graduated midterm would also be captured. So it's meant to be very flexible in response to those changing enrollments throughout versus just giving her one or giving the charter models, one checkpoint for this first semester and then another checkpoint for the second semester after all of the services have been provided, which again is consistent with all of the districts. They all have to wait until the services have been provided in order to build back for those services.
Checkpoints laid out in the legislation?
It referenced reconciliation points. So what we did is we identified reconciliation points that the charter is already going to have to meet. So we have a collection. We have our certified enrollment that's due October 1st. Then we have our winter SRI, student reporting in Iowa, and we have a spring student reporting in Iowa that the charter would have already been required to complete along with all of the districts. And those actually share all of actual enrollment dates and actual students that are attending. So we felt that in order, not compounding more work for the Choice Charter School or any other charter school, that we would just go along with points that were already existing.
Would you have the ability to do what she talked about, which was giving the funding for the 275 at the beginning and then let's say a checkpoint in January, it was less, and then they can give back the money?
I think some of the challenge with that is the policy around that of the feasibility of forward funding any schools, especially when she, when we think about districts, right? We think about how they're funded and they're, they're funded a year and a year, an entire school year and a years. So the students that they're serving this year are counted the previous fall. So the students that they serve last fall of October 21 is actually generating the funding for the school year that's going to begin August 23rd this year. So then if you compare that to how charters, which are also public schools, are getting, are getting funded, then right now even just doing the on time model is something. And I think we have to really look at if we have, as a state, because this is state appropriation dollars, if as a state we have the ability or the authority to do this because in the Constitution, we don't have the ability to actually allow, I had the, I didn't want to miss speed, "The credit of a state shall not in any manner be given or loaned to and aid of any individual association or corporation. A state shall never assume or become responsible for the debts and liabilities of individuals and so forth unless incurred in times of war." And so I think the forward funding may come into some sort of scope in that, that we have to really look at if we have the authority to forward fund versus paying for services actually being provided.
So if you, let's say a normal school district and you're saying that they do the enrollment difference. Let's say the year before the enrollment is 1,000 and then you're moving into the current school district of which that will fund, but you only have 900 that are enrolled.
So 1,000.
And you really only actually have 900 enrolled in this upcoming year.
Yeah, correct. And the reverse is opposite also. It's true also. So if they have 1,000 and then they end up serving 1,100, they still only have that part of that. There are some provisions that would allow for coming to the SBRC with the authority that would be gained, but there's not a provision for them to actually ever get the funding for those additional students. So if they're, if they're funded for 1,000, but they serve 1,100, there's no sort of state appropriation that's going to make up the funding for those other 100.
But if they, if they're funded at 1,000, they only have 900, they do still keep that funding, right?
Correct. The next year it's funded at 900 and then depending whatever their new enrollment is.
But isn't a new charter school, isn't that number in the contract a key part? I mean, it's saying here that the funding required under this rule for the first school year of a new charter school should be based on enrollment estimates for the charter school included in the charter school contract. So it is a little different than, than, how do I, a regular public school in the sense that it's brand new and we're agreeing to, I mean, I'm, now I'm wondering, is this more about the initial estimate than it is about the payment process?
Well, and I think if we start off with 1912.7, it starts off if necessary. And so I think absent further guidance or absent any other mechanism, I think it's giving us the caveat that we can do that if there's no other mechanism or process established. Can I raise one more point that hasn't been considered?
Yeah, sure, sorry.
So while I appreciate Dr. Knight's thoughtfulness and all the information that she's shared with us throughout, starting with this process and trying to figure out what would work for a charter school, it's not just Dr. Knight's charter school that we're addressing. So any decisions made today are open up to any other founding model, state board model that starts within, under the statute. And November 1st is the deadline for those. So we don't know what that looks like now, but we know that there's interest. We anticipate based on conversations and, and history and, and such, that there will be additional charter schools coming in. So while the information specific to charter, to Choice Charter School is important, there's a bigger context here in the applicability and scalability of what that looks like for other charter schools that may be established pursuant to that legislation.
Could you maybe address to, you know, the idea of what you're estimating and verification of the estimate? I mean, there's a process where we need to ensure that an estimate is based on some other real time, you know, tangible information that if we said someone came in with an estimate of 500 students and they only had 50, you know, there has to be a verification of the actual students served. And would we fund 500 knowing that in our first checkpoint, there's only 50? And then how do we recruit some of those funds? There is, there is a legitimate challenge for schools starting new based on funding. And a lot of them require some type of partnership, some type of additional pathways, some type of additional funds, location. Dr. Knight's program is based virtually, you know, so resources that are available. You know, there is as a public school opportunity for her that we'll talk to her about, we haven't brought this up to you yet, capacity to access some of our resources, like the state rate of a Canvas contract that we have. So there's maybe other ways to help serve that because we know those are challenges. This really gets to the question of what precedent do you want to set in terms of, of this concept and idea of forward funding, but in alignment with, well, the charter school is set up differently than other public schools. This acknowledging, it is a, it is a complicated question.
Cassandra, how do they come up with the number to begin with?
I would defer that question to one of the charter school applicants. So there's 4,500 kids that dropped out and based on my faculty and, and what we could support, 300 was what we, what we came up with, which is a small piece of the 4,500.
So part of your argument too, Dr. Knight, would be if we do a good job of educating these kids, then we may be done with them. We start them in September, they're done in November. I mean, we got these kids at GED or however you, you evaluate them. So part of your argument is, gosh darn it, I'm not going to have those kids anymore. You're not going to count those kids. We hired teachers. We did a great job. We educated them. But now I don't have funding to keep that teacher. What am I going to do with them? Is that?
Right.
Okay. And do you feel comfortable with that now?
Yes.
Okay.
I feel very comfortable. In fact, I feel comfortable that there'll be more than 300 kids come through our school.
Okay. But you're comfortable with the funding mechanism that we have in place if we adopt this?
No.
Okay.
Not at all.
Okay. So is your concern what I just expressed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Then if I, if I, if my income from the state is based on today's count, which would be tomorrow, right, it'd be 50. Well, I cannot hire teachers. I cannot buy the curriculum. I cannot buy the JMC that I have to have to report to the state with that money. It would not function.
Okay. So you'd be in trouble.
Yes.
Your bank account.
Yes.
Sure.
So the, we, the contract said there'd be 300?
Yep.
And you're projecting now tomorrow 50?
Yes.
So the verification process you were talking about, how does that?
That's what's tomorrow.
So tomorrow begins the baseline. So based on the numbers that she provides tomorrow, that number then generates the payments that would begin in September.
Is there some kind of sunset clause that we could do for charter schools that were in place before this point in time and that these rule changes would apply to charter schools approved after the state so that it wouldn't impact schools that are in their first year of operation this year, but it would impact schools moving forward?
Potentially. That's certainly something you could do. I think another piece of this that I don't think has been discussed yet is what happens to the dollars that don't flow to the, to Choice Charter School. So the way that it's set up is the districts are still generating the dollars. And so from the dollars that would flow to the district, anyone else serving that district student would only receive the dollars for the time at which they actually serve the student. Otherwise, those, those dollars would still flow. So if you have a student that, yes, I'm going to attend Choice Charter, and then they begin there and they say, you know what, I'm actually going to go back to the district. So that, that district would still be generating dollars in order to serve that student. And so I think that's part of the, the challenge here too, is she's requesting that 275 students get funded for the entire year. But, but then what happens is if those students go somewhere else to get served, she's getting paid, but somebody else is incurring the cost of serve those students. So I think that adds another level of complexity to it.
Just so I understand, Cassandra, so right now she would be funded at 275 for the first semester?
She would be funded for the amount that she reports tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Which would then be reconciled based on an October 1 count date for payments starting in November, which would then again change based on enrollment numbers reported in January that would affect the February dates. And then we'd go through the end of the year and we would reconcile her last payment with the numbers that are reported in July.
Okay. Back to your scenario that you said that that student was there and then it went, then that student went to a different school. So in open enrollment today, so if I open enroll to a different school I'm currently in pays the other school, correct? But let's say the mid semester I decided to go back.
So they only bill for the days that the student actually attends.
Yeah.
So in open enrollment or in any other tuition out situation, the district that's actually serving can only bill that daily tuition rate. And I mean daily. So when they report the students in the student information system, they begin with the date that they became a student and the date that they exited that, that district or school. And then that's the only timeframe that they can bill for.
Okay. So then if I were to go back. So then if I were to go back, my school district still, the whole amount does not go to them when I go over the first time. Okay.
So how does that transfer of funds happen? Does that happen between the school districts?
So, so what we're doing for the charters is so since the, since the districts won't actually be funded for those students until the next year, we didn't want them to have to pay out of pocket for students that potentially they hadn't been, they hadn't generated funding for yet. And so what this legislation, the legislation also allows and the rules before you would allow is that the state will actually be paying the amount that is due direct to the charter school. So there's no lag time for billing. So that reduces the, the lag time for the nine months or six months for the billing. And then the state will withhold that amount then from the districts and then follow the fiscal year when that funding is generated.
I meant if it was a, if it was an open enrollment between public school to public school. So if I switched from Bondurant to Ankeny mid-year, so would Bondurant pay Ankeny? I don't know if I gave this scenario quite right, but, so those daily fees, like if it's switched mid-year, would that payment come from school district to school district or would the state?
So in general, yes. If, if a district is serving a student that belongs to in any capacity, whether it's open enrollment or tuition out or anything like that, let's just talk in general. Because there's some, there's actually some specifics about what you talked about that would actually apply to open enrollment that I don't think is the crux of your question. Let's make it in general. If another entity is serving that student, then yes, they can switch back and forth and Johnston could bill, you know, for the portion that Johnston billed and then Ankeny could bill for the portion that, that Ankeny served the student.
But that's being done between the two districts.
That is between the districts. The state is out of it completely. Yes.
So in your scenario, Bondurant would pay.
Okay. So back to the question, could we do a separate paragraph for charter schools in operation prior to this change? This, that they, the rule applies that they, they have their year of funding based on their estimate. If the student leaves and says, I don't want to go to my charter school anymore, they could have the same kind of arrangement that they bill the other, the school where they return to bills the charter school. So they get their fee. So the charter school doesn't retain the fees for that student since the charter school has received the funding in advance. So then the state can be out of it like they would be in the public school scenario. And then based on the way the contract was, and then once the charter schools that have existed prior to the date, once their year is done, every charter school that is created post this point, the rules as they're proposed today apply.
So a couple of things there. Number one, a lot of the language that is in the rules matches what's in statute. So whether we could say that only applies to some going forward or not, I defer to Director Levo or Thomas.
And I think, to go back to the point of why this is being brought into question was directly tied to Dr. Knight's concerns and her ask is for the estimate of 300 to be paid for the full year because she built her budget based on that. So all of these details are just about when the money goes back and forth. But her stance is that without the full amount, she built it around expecting the full amount for the full year. But it's vastly different than the number of students that are actually going to be in there. So because even though it's a charter and there's different processes, it is public school to public school. So what is the stance? You know, these rules were presented to be as equitable as possible, to give them as much real time funding as possible. But it becomes very complicated if we're going to pay for a vastly greater number of students who are actually being served because the impact is going to have on the public systems as well.
But I think the difference is that there's not an existing student base, right?
And there's not, and there may not be, well, it will depend. In this specific scenario, remember, this decision would apply to everyone. In this very specific scenario, it is different, but whatever you decide today would apply to everyone.
Right. I'm just saying in her situation, there's not an existing student population. So like the example that I gave before, if I have a school that the year before they had 1,000 and now really their own enrollment was 900 or vice versa, you know, but they at least have some kind of funding on a larger amount coming in and then you have to adjust. Whereas for this school, I mean, it's a startup. We all think about a business startup and they don't have that lump sum to be balancing to start off with.
And that was, you know, articulated and understood in April.
Yeah.
Part of this process.
So this question.
Not that it makes it better.
Yeah.
So what's reported in the term is our funding from when to October 1st?
It will fund through the November payment.
So whatever's reported tomorrow goes through November. And so the November is the, is the next checkpoint?
Could be. And, and we have the ability to have additional checkpoints. I mean, if we wanted to do during years of startup monthly checkpoints, that would certainly be something that we could build the capacity to support.
But I hear, but I think what I heard is that with the 50, she can't get what's needed to even start. That's all. I'm just.
Correct.
So, so I'm clear, if we enact this rule change as proposed, it would be fatal to choice? It's not a matter of scaling back expectations or staff or something like that and growing from there? Do you agree with that, Thomas?
Dr. Knight knows her findings is better than me. It's a fiscal question, so scalability, sustainability. This, this rulemaking, whichever way, whichever decision is made is a question of risk management for the board. Like where, where is the risk going to lie? What happens if only 50 show up throughout the year? And then is it a year two question versus a year one question? You know, this is, this is a, as a matter of policy, this is a risk management question. And.
But isn't that the same? I just want to make sure I'm clear here. And I don't disagree, but isn't that the same if I had 1,000 and I only had 900 that actually enrolled? I'm getting money for 1,000 versus the 900.
But you served that 1,000 the year before.
Yeah.
And so you, but then your funds for the, for year two or year to be on the baseline would be 900 and then you serve however many students.
Right.
So the, the point is valid is that there's no, there's no, there's no base. There's like, the base of students enrolled is zero right now.
I, I think there's two competing things here. One is I don't think we allocate anybody any money. Right? I mean, the legislature does that, but. So, so it's that constitutional thing Cassandra mentioned before, you know, that gets in the way once. I'm, I'm kidding. But, you know, it does talk in 19.12.7 about we're going to use the number in the contract. And so I wonder if, if that's not going to be what we do, then maybe that shouldn't say that.
Correct. So that, so then, and, and that's exactly kind of the point here. So based on that, it would be 300. And then in November, when there's only 50, financially, what does that look like?
Right. Because, so in a sense, you're kind of, if we do something, and I'm very sympathetic to the school, I voted for it. I think it's a good thing. I don't want it to fail. But if we do something today, we're just kicking the can down the road unless there's 250 to 300 students by the next measurement date, which pays November 1.
Well, and that's the flip side of the issue that I'm trying to navigate through here too, is how many charter schools do we have right now that are in year one?
Two.
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 We had a two, we have one.
So this is where my mind is at right now is with the rule changing, there was a different kind of thought process for these two charter schools as they were kind of going into their structure and getting started. I think if these rules are in place for any new charter school coming into the, into this process, they know how to budget and build their budget and move forward because they know that these checkpoints are going to be in place and how the funding mechanism will work. I think the hard part for these two schools is that the way that they were looking at how the funding mechanism was going to work as they were coming into it now is kind of changing as they're.
To their benefit. It was changed specifically because originally it was, they weren't going to get any money till March. So this change was designed to benefit the district so that they would get it monthly.
So they would start in September or whatever and not get any money until the following March.
She wasn't going to get a dime until March of the next year. So, so to your point, the new change was for their benefit and now it's still not enough. So what is the, what is the next change? Like how far is this board willing to adjust the metrics to ensure success of these schools? How much is the board's responsibility? How much is the institution's responsibility? And it's new.
And if, why is the other school not here because they have sufficient capital to do it without?
They establish partnerships to help support it.
Yeah. And they're a school board, state board model.
Correct.
Oh yeah. That's right. That's, that's the difference.
And they have a physical structure versus this is virtual. This is.
I, I remember now, yeah.
So a question, are you, when do you anticipate having a better number as far as actual starter school?
I would say probably because I have a couple towns that are working with me, Muscatine being one of them, finding 40 to 80 kids, Cedar Rapids being another, finding another 40 to 80 kids. I would expect by October that we should have a good chunk found by then. The other thing is that the agreement and what I understood the law to read was that the first year was going to be based on an estimate and not actual. Estimate, I estimated 300. And that's what I based my whole budget on, buying computers, buying WiFi's, hiring up teachers. If it's going to go to actual and it's going to fluctuate through the year, I'm not sure any business can really do that for the first year. My proposal is that we get this funding for the first year and then like school districts, if I don't educate those kids, then that comes off my next year or I pay it back. If I don't educate those kids, I can keep some, some of the money, you know, and we'll just figure out how to pay you back. But I truly suspect that once people know about this, I've had since March, April actually when the contract, so April, May, June, July, to get the word out across the state of Iowa. And that takes a lot of time and effort. And I think as people learn more about what Choice Charter School can do for the 4,500 kids that have dropped out, we'll see numbers increase and it'll, it'll be a total at the end bigger than 300 because some kids need only five credits. They'll come and go and then I'll fill it up with another kid who needs to spy more and come and go and come and go. But the thing is we've affected these children's lives. We have changed the trajectory of their life. And that's what we're talking about here is children's lives.
Have you worked to get other partners to partner with you?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I mean, I've got businesses, I've got, they just don't want to hand me money, but they certainly will support me in helping support these children.
Cassandra says something?
Yes.
So I understand that the goal is to support the Choice Charter School as well as other charter schools, but I wanted to just put some, and of course we're all here, all of us are here because we support the education of the students. But at the end of the day, it does come down to, at least in this context right now, for these rules, it comes down to the funding. So just quickly, I put some numbers together. So if we were to begin the year, funding at the 275 would, the 300, which was the estimate, it'd be about two point, just under $2.3 million. So districts and charters would get 10 payments throughout the year. So that means before it's changed for her first initial checkpoint, they would get more money in the year than they would if they only served 50 students throughout the year, which means after the November payment, they would not receive another, another dime from the state appropriation. But that's, that's just how that would work this year. So secondly, I would say just overall, if she were to get the two, if Choice Charter were to get the 2.27 million and then did end up serving 50 kids, let's just say throughout the year. So the equivalent to 50 kids throughout the year, so that could be 300 kids being there for different numbers of credits throughout the year, but let's just say total 50 FTE, she would then owe the state at the end of the year just under $1.9 million. So if we think about the sustainability of Choice Charter School or any other charter school that's operating on, on an anticipated enrollment model versus a serving enrollment model, I don't know how that would be sustainable to start the next year at 1.8 million or just under $1.9 million in debt and then expect to continue to serve students while not receiving funding.
Are there any, aren't there any grant programs that she can apply to to help with the startup?
So one of the things Thomas and I had talked about and sharing with her as well is, is there things through, you know, Beth or Debbie where there's grant opportunities or fundings for a startup? Because it's balancing that business startup costs with the funding, just like all schools receive. And it is a kind of a mismatch. So certainly I, I couldn't name specifically what they are, but that is something that she could pursue or we could help her pursue because the startup is a heavy lift and it isn't accounted for in how the dollars are allotted.
But those things don't happen by end of August.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd be lucky to be ready for next year.
So questions would be on a platform for her to use, access to the service and staff. You know, for, in her instance, the benefit is she doesn't need the physical space, although I think, I don't want to speak out of turn, you do have a physical location.
I have an office.
Yeah. But there's still the cost for the, the accessing the students.
So if we would have more checkpoints along the way, let's say in her case being a non-state board charter school of September checkpoint, then October checkpoint, November checkpoint. And I don't know if you, I don't know if this is legal or not, but let's say that all of a sudden in September now she has 100 students. Can we retroactively pay her for the kids that she served that she did not receive credit for? I'm just thinking, I think the model's going to build and I'd like to see it be successful. I don't think it will be successful unless she brings her budget to 50 kids because you can't, the leap is too big. For her to be successful, she has to have some type of guarantee that if I have 100 kids, I'm going to see funding for 100 kids. I'll maybe, I have 100 kids on October 1st, but they were actually, they were September 1st. Is there a need to backfill that?
So regarding additional checkpoints, the rules are at a minimum, the checkpoints listed in statute. So the department with these rules could add additional checkpoints throughout the year for all charter schools, for specific charter schools based on risk, principles of risk management. So the question about can we add additional charter, can we add additional checkpoints and reconciliation points and count points? The answer even with the rules as proposed is yes.
John, particularly appreciate your comments. How is it we make this work? I mean, we are dealing with a group of kids that are not going to be served. She's going to add value to those kids. I don't know how much value she's going to add, but it's going to be considerable tax dollars. Better jobs and better equipped to be in the workforce, do all of those things. Again, she's dealing with a group of kids that had difficult time in a public school system, a public school setting. And it seems to me that as we were concerned about trying to get kids moving through the system at their own rate and push kids out of there much quicker than the public school system would. How we make it work dollar wise, I'm not smart enough to figure that one out. You guys got to figure that out. But it seems to me it's in our best interest to make this work. And again, dealing with some kids that have dropped out of the system, we want to keep them going.
But, but that's why we passed this as a charter school and signed a contract. We, we all agree that this is a great idea, but I, I mean, Cassandra, you know, how, how can you go into next year owing back at 1.9 million? You don't think that's going to happen? You think you're going to scale up?
Right. I mean, the other scenario hasn't been brought up is that what if I have 600 kids?
Understood. I hope you do unless that's too many. I don't know what your capacity is. I mean, you'd have to hire more staff, I would assume.
Thomas, I'm going to ask the same question I asked with the last set of rules. Do we have the authority to not adopt something here? Like there's a problem here and we all want to solve it, but is it within the ambit of our authority to solve this problem or is this something that has to come from somewhere else?
Some sort of emergency rules need to be adopted, so we're not waiting till March. Some sort of emergency rules need to be adopted, so we're not waiting till March. The statute is, statute directs the department to establish rules to set out a process. The question before the board is how much latitude, how much risk is the board willing to absorb? How much risk is the board willing to allow Choice Charter School to absorb? It's a, back to my earlier statement, it's a risk, it's a risk management question. How much flexibility, how much flexibility beyond what other parts of the system of public education would have? It is within the board's prerogative to adjust or direct the adjustment of these proposed rules.
So I have a question for you. How much are your startup costs then?
It was in the budget that I, that I had given to you when we, when you approved the 300 estimate. But there's, I'm going to lease the computers instead of buying them. So that will be, that's a huge savings. So that's $33,000. My staff alone, each, I can get it up here. I have a full-time science, full-time math, full-time social studies, full-time curriculum director, a full-time principal, and special ed, ELO. My ELO is part-time and my GT is part of my curriculum director. And, and then we bought JMC, which tops the state system. That's another $5,000. I have a registrar. Get it up here. So I think the first month. Year? Yeah. So I guess you could divide that by 12. Well, I've changed that a little bit because I've readjusted some of the.
What is it?
So my first year is 2.2 million, 25,049. So you divide that by 12 or 10. So you get your 12. I would divide it by 12 and then you get your, because I plan to pay my people 12 on the side of the year.
If, if it's, if it's okay with the board, I would like to take a quick break on this or adjourn to lunch so I could consult with Thomas a little bit on this before we make a final decision. Dr. Knight, I don't want to make you sit longer. I don't know if lunch is here, we would have a break for that. Okay. We could take a quick 10-minute break and adjourn before we make any decision. Are you comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with that, yes.
Okay. We'll be back in 10 minutes.